So, welcome to Lewiston, the second largest city in Maine, but the city with the biggest heart. And we are here tonight to start with a workshop. And that is Agenda Item A, which is Murphy Home Street and Water Service on Memorial Avenue.
All right. Well, you may be before it's over.
Good evening, Counselor.
Hello?
Mayor. In your packet, there's a memo from me that describes a memorandum of understanding between us and Gendron Corp. And it's -- there's a school for disabled children or special needs children going in behind Walmart at the end of Memorial Avenue. Memorial Avenue has a couple attributes. One is there is old eight-inch cast, not cast, yeah, cast, but unlined pipe there that the city has on its backlog list to be replaced. And in addition to that, the street is beginning to degrade. It's down to a PCI of 77. Gendron Corp had offered to the city to do a couple of things. One is to replace that pipe, to actually physically install it if we'd buy the materials, which would remove it from our backlog list. The installation, the materials for the installation of that water line, around $16,600 of what would be city money to buy the materials. The installation of that pipe would then be estimated at around $57,500 if the city were to do it. So if we ask Gendron Corp to do it while they're there, we'll save around $57,000 of a future need that's not scheduled at this time. Likewise, Gendron Corp has offered to rebuild, reconstruct the roadway, re-shim the roadway, and reset the crown and drainage from the roadway if the city would repave the roadway. Otherwise, they're just going to pave the waterline trench. The cost of paving is around $28,900. And that would save us for our preparation of paving is around $8,300. Total cost to the city is $45,492 estimated. The saving is around $65,917 future cost.
Are you ready for questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So basically, what we're talking about is a project that would have needed to happen at some point anyway. They're looking to do work in the area sooner than we were expecting to do the work. And it's allowing us to save on the costs to the city. Other questions on the council? Councilor Markott?
Do we know yet that it was scheduled to be done?
I don't believe it was on the schedule because it was 77. The current pavement condition was a 77. So paving was not on the current schedule, current five-year schedule. I don't know when we redo it later this summer whether it would have been on this five-year schedule. I suspect probably not. The waterline was not on the current schedule, but certainly is one that does need to be replaced. Would probably be, depending on what was at the end of the line, might be sooner than later. It really depends on what the city, how the city, how that street developed into the future.
So this would complete the street for a good 20 years?
Yes, sir.
From Main Street all the way to the Murphy Homes property line?
Yes, and a couple of things they're doing in addition. They are, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of the street that's substandard. There's drainage at the end of the street that's substandard. They're building a kind of a T turnaround, hammerhead turnaround. The city on-city property, they're building that from soup to nuts and reset the drainage. All we, what we would do, or what I would recommend we do is discontinue the cul-de-sac and then accept that turnaround as part of the city street. So we'll get a city street that's really built to standards in the end as well as a second benefit.
Was that area part of a trail system of any sort?
There is a trail that runs up to the property from the Land Trust property that starts off on, over on, I forget the name of the street that runs by there, but if you go in past the CMP lot and you turn left, between CMP and what used to be Planet Fitness, and you turn left just down the ways there, there is an entry into some Land Trust land. There's a trail that goes back there. That trail, I think informally, had extended onto some of this property. And as I recall, there is provisions in the site plan for a trail on this property that would connect into that trail. Am I correct?
I believe that's correct. Does it, Mike?
Because I remember seeing some sort of graph, or graphic, something crossing Main Street right about at that point at the other side of Martins. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, there's, the trail is all back along the river.
The backside, right.
On the backside of the property. There's nothing that this project is associated with on Main Street.
I'll have to go looking. I don't think it had to do with the--
There's, there's been--
The, the walkway.
No, there's been, there's been some discussion of, I guess, the area where the shopping center is up there and the ability to get across the street on Main Street there. But I don't remember all the details of that discussion.
Further questions on the council? Thank you.
So if it's okay with you folks, we will bring that agreement back for formal approval at the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Dale. The second item for discussion and workshop tonight is prohibiting smoking in Dufresne Plaza.
That's correct. I received a call from Councilmember Markott, who at a request of a constituent asked that the council consider designating Dufresne Plaza as a no-smoking area. And that would be done in an ordinance amendment that's in your book. It would be Chapter 54, where it would be simply added to the section that specifies smoking and all of the use of tobacco products. It's not permitted marked in Parity Park, Pettingill School Park, and all city-owned playground areas, including playgrounds, aquatic areas, skate park, and basketball courts. We would add Dufresne Plaza to that. We would also clarify where it says smoking and all other use of tobacco products. We would add a new phrase, including vaping and e-cigarette use, to make sure. I think that's pretty much, you could argue it was covered now, but that makes it clear that it's covered. We have received complaints about smoking in Dufresne Plaza. As you know, that's become somewhat of a hangout area for people who are looking for temporary day work from Labor Ready. Plus, there's a considerable number of employees in the immediate area who've used that area for smoking. So that would add that to it. In the process of doing this, we're also cleaning up some of our definitions to make sure that we are defining parks correctly. And so that's getting rid of things like St. Mary's Park, which no longer exists, adding in some language about Jude's Place at Markott Park. So it's just an effort to clarify our park listing. So those would be the two amendments. They apply to two parts of the code. Parks and Recreation, Chapter 54, is where the no-smoking section would be put in. And in Chapter 14, Animals, for summary, we have a list of city parks there because there are limitations on animals in city parks. So we had to make the same adjustments to the park identifications in that chapter as in Chapter 54.
Councilor Lyson?
Ed, one of the things that's listed is the Martell School. Is it in play being longer?
That's correct. It's no longer, it's no--
Can I ask a question though? So is it, the school is no longer there, but is the playground still there with the equipment?
The playground is still there.
And I mean, the school is still, it's just not a school. The building is still there.
The playground equipment can't be moved because if you move it, you run into all kinds of liability issues going forward. Question is whether we want to retain that as a playground or not. I think that's going to somewhat depend on what kind of interest we might have in potential redevelopment of that site.
I mean, because it's probably still going to be used as a playground, I would suggest leaving it on the list until--
We could certainly do that. Leave it on the list until that decision's made, so I can make that adjustment.
And then, I'm probably opening two big cans of worms here. But I think at some point, it's probably worth having a conversation about our smoking policy throughout all city parks. It seems odd to me that we're making decisions on a park-by-park basis. If we think it's inappropriate to be smoking in a park, we think it's inappropriate to be smoking in a park. And then the second piece is, as we go down the road of recreational marijuana, how does that play in as, you know, as we're adding vaping and those kinds of things? Does that also--
Under state law, you cannot smoke marijuana in public. I've had some discussion with the chief about whether we should add that to our code of ordinances because in some way it might be easier for us to enforce our local ordinance than state law. So I think we may come back with something along those lines for you to consider as well. Just be simpler for our police officers to deal with that than to deal with violation of state law. It's a civil violation, much simpler for us to process.
Further discussion of that? Councilor Markott?
I would agree with the sentiment of leaving Martell on.
We will do that.
But I was also a little curious, and I think you addressed the St. Mary's Playground, no longer exists at--
Correct.
Oxford Street. Jude's Place at Markott Park. Is that all encompassing of Markott Park?
That is just the playground area.
So what about the rest of the park?
The general rule, unless it's specifically called out, is that smoking is allowed currently in our parks excepted playground areas, ball fields, things like that. That relates back to the mayor's comment that maybe we should consider outlawing smoking in all of our public parks. And certainly, that would be up to the city council. The last time that was discussed was a few years ago, and there was not, there was not a strong feeling to do that at that time.
We're all, we're including the Lincoln Street Boat Launch. It's not a playground, not for children, anyway. Leeds Park wouldn't be much different than the remaining portion of Markott Park.
Well, if you look, if you look in Section 54-10, that lists the specific areas where smoking is prohibited. That includes, if this goes through Judge, Dufresne Plaza, Mark W. Parity Park, Pettingill School Park, and all city-owned playground areas to include playgrounds, aquatic areas, skate parks, and basketball courts. So it doesn't include the boat launch. It doesn't include Samar Payne Park. It doesn't include a lot of our public parks that don't have playgrounds or basketball courts, things like that in it.
Okay, I was looking in a different section. Thank you.
Further discussion on the council?
So do you want us to just go ahead with this amendment? Or do you want us to come back with something that just says no smoking anywhere in city parks?
Councilor Pettingill?
I would be in favor of moving forward with something for no smoking within city parks.
Councilor Ray?
Ditto.
So that's three of us. I'm not sure where the other. So I think--
Okay. That makes life simpler.
So we have about five minutes before seven o'clock when the meeting starts. And we're waiting on some Little League players to give recognition to. So we'll take a brief break.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we were scheduled to start the evening with a recognition of the Lewiston All-Star Little League players, but unfortunately, there was some miscommunication about whether they were supposed to be here tonight or at our next meeting, and they seemed to believe that it was our next meeting, so we are going to postpone that item to our meeting on September 17th. And at this time, I'd like to open the public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government that aren't addressed other places on the agenda. We allow three minutes per speaker and a maximum time of 15 minutes for all comments. So if anyone has an item that they'd like to speak to that is not currently on the agenda, please come to the podium. And if you could just state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Good evening, my name is Jen Hogan, and I'm the President/CEO at Community Credit Union located at 144 Pine Street in Lewiston. And I wanted to take this brief opportunity to first express my gratitude and thanks to the City of Lewiston, and to also officially extend an invitation to city officials and the community at large to join us for a block party that we're going to be holding on Pine Street. This is an event that was originally started with the business community, and we've since expanded it to include lots of community partners, residents, and the city, who's co-sponsoring the event with us. So on Wednesday, September 18th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., we're going to be closing off Pine Street from Bartlett to Howe, and hosting a block party that will include lots of fun activities, things for the kids like face painting, Mr. Drew and his animals, things for anybody of any age, including free hot dogs and popcorn, information on the downtown transformation plan, and lots more fun things. So I just wanted to officially thank the city for co-sponsoring this event with us, extend the invitation, and hope that everybody will come out and join us. It's truly a great opportunity to celebrate the great things that have been happening in our downtown, and to also show pride in a neighborhood that many of us live, work, or play in. So, please join us September 18th from 4:00 to 7:00. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else for public comment period? All right, public comment period is now closed.
And we'll say that all roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward Two.
And do you, I just want to mention that Counselor Beam from Ward Six has an excused absence tonight. Agenda item number one.
Item number one, public hearing on a new application for a new liquor license for Legend Sports Bar and Grill for Molleson Way. Requested action to authorize the City Clerk's Office to approve a new liquor license application for Legend Sports Bar and Grill for Molleson Way.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll?
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Agenda item number two.
Item number two, public hearing on a relocation application for a liquor license for LRI Incorporated, doing business as Winners Circle OTB at 675 Main Street. Requested action to authorize the City Clerk's Office to approve a relocation liquor license application for LRI Incorporated, doing business as Winners Circle OTB to 675 Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Petten Gill. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll?
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Agenda item number three.
Item number three, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for the Dempsey Challenge. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application from the Dempsey Challenge Committee for outdoor musical concerts to be held at Samar Payne Memorial Park on September 28th and 29th as part of the Dempsey Challenge, and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to the organizing committee for the outdoor music concerts contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Land Use Officer, and Code Health Officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Petten Gill. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Counselor Mark.
I was just not curious, on the third page in Event Details and what we need to know, number of days says 10, and then the $75 filed in down below it? So is it that 75 or the 750 above?
They would have paid $750 for the 10 days that they're using the park, because they require a lot of advanced setup prior to the actual event.
Okay. And down below, it appears that the event's actually just three days, correct? Because everything seems to be multiples of three?
Right, I believe it's a fairly condensed event. I mean, again, they're using the park space for 10 days, but they just need, have the actual event for less than that.
Okay. And why would there be two different food service licenses?
One is a food truck. The city licensed food trucks differently than food stands. So it looks like they're going to be hiring caterers to come in and provide breakfast items on Saturday, as well as conduct the lobster bake on Sunday. That is different from food truck licensing in the city due to inspections that are required, health and safety inspections that are required of the truck.
Okay. Maybe in the future, if they just had a little sub header under each, or over each.
Sure.
Any further discussion on the council? Call the roll?
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Agenda item number four.
Item number four, ordinance establishing a standing housing committee. Requested action, original motion that was tabled, that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Sections 225 through 229, Housing Committee, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and that the public hearing on said ordinance be continued to the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Alternative motion for final approval, that a public hearing be held on the proposed amendment to Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances establishing a standing housing committee, and that it receive final passage by a roll call vote.
So, Ed, can you give us an overview on this?
Sure, let me, let me walk people through this, because there's a number of pieces of paper here that kind of build on each other. As the council is aware, we discussed this at two different workshops, and did have the item at first reading at the July meeting. At that time, it was tabled. We had subsequent discussion at a workshop after that. If you look through the packet, the first item, the first version of the ordinance is the ordinance version that was tabled at the July meeting. So that is the ordinance that is technically before you at the moment that you're starting to work from. There are two other versions of that ordinance. The next one is what I call the ordinance version with consensus amendments. This adds a couple of amendments that came out of the last workshop that everybody seemed to be in line with. One is in Section 2-226, where we have moved the discussion of lead poisoning into a separate item, number six. That now says, "Develop and recommend policies and guidance for ensuring safe, healthy, and lead-free housing throughout Lewiston by 2043." That lines up with the policies that we're pursuing in the neighborhood, Choice Neighborhood Grant. In Section 2-227, there was an agreement to specify that the members would be appointed by the mayor and individually confirmed by the City Council. So that change has been made. And then at that workshop, there was a considerable amount of discussion about some of the qualifying language that was applied to expertise requirements on certain positions, in particular, that of, that of someone from a financial institution, someone from the development or real estate community, and somebody from an agency or firm that owns subsidized multifamily unit properties. So I tried to clean up the language there to coincide with the discussion at the workshop. So those are the consensus amendments that came out of the last workshop. The final ordinance in your packet is titled ordinance version with residence amendment, and that makes one change in Section 2-227, where the following phrase was inserted, or I'll read the whole sentence, "Except as noted below, members shall reside in Lewiston unless a qualified Lewiston resident cannot be found who is willing to accept appointment to fill a specific position." In the earlier versions of the amendment, the requirement is for Lewiston residents to be appointed. This provides a little bit of flexibility in case a Lewiston resident meeting the necessary qualifications is not interested or found willing to serve. So those are the three amendments here. Procedurally, you have a number of choices. Obviously, if you wish to substitute the consensus amendment version, you can move that by substit-, as an amendment by substitution. As I mentioned, the third version with residence amendment incorporates all of the changes in the consensus version. So you could do that one either separately, discuss it separately, or move that as substitution either. Then when you're done with all of that, we have to go back and straighten out the initial motion, and whether you want to consider this for first passage tonight or final passage, which also would be in order. So with that, I'd kind of suggest maybe at this point, the next best thing to do would be to listen to the public and see if they have any comments on the various items and versions that are being presented tonight.
Great, thank you. So I would open it up to the public for comments on the three versions of the housing committee. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
You already know me. Ronnie Parity, 82 Prospect Avenue, Chair of the Public Health Committee, and having spent a year on rental registration, I'm here to support the housing committee and ask you to support this committee. There's a lot of work we did in rental registration, but I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done to continue through, through our next few years or whatever. And with the housing, it is a public health issue, and we should continue with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anyone else wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. I'm not sure, is there a specific place you'd like us to start, Ed, or?
At this point, it's up to you folks.
Okay. Counselor Lyson, I would like-
So, only under subsection seven, the LA Public Health Committee is the only one where it says, "May or may not be."
That's correct.
The rest of them, it's assumed unless you could find, unless no one wants to volunteer to do that, right? With that expertise.
Up through-
Depends on the version you're looking at, right?
I'm looking at the final version.
Okay. The version three.
And that's the third version, third.
The third version, well, the Representative Public Health Committee has never been limited to a Lewiston resident because of the nature of that committee, which has a number of area residents on it due to expertise. Everybody else up to the final version would have to be a Lewiston resident. The final version does provide some flexibility by having the language in there that says, "Unless, unless somebody can't be found with the necessary expertise."
Okay, thank you.
There it is. "Must reside in Lewiston unless a qualified Lewiston resident cannot be found who is willing to accept appointment to fill a specific position." And I think that was the largest issue the council was, was discussing at this last workshop.
You all set?
I'm all set.
So, two things, oh, sorry, Counselor Petten.
If, I want to add something to this, I know it's last minute, but setting standing meeting dates for joint meetings with the City Council.
Yeah, I might suggest that we first deal with these three and pick which one you want to use as the base going forward, and then we can amend that, because I think there may be more than one other amendment that's going to be coming forward.
Possible. So I would go with, with the ordinance version with consensus amendments. You know, we're setting the standard for, for housing and, you know, the, the big issue and potential that this has, you know, it's, this is for the city of Lewiston, it's for the people of Lewiston. So if we're determining policies for, for housing and safety, you know, it really needs to be for the, the people of Lewiston.
So can I ask a question? So, clearly, I think the council is split on two versions of this committee. Some, one of us moves one of them, then we vote on that one, and then if that fails, we come back and vote on the second one? Is that how that would work?
It, yes, it could work, it depends which one you go first. You know, you could build, you could build sequentially, you could go with the consensus amendment first, since that seems to be something that everybody agrees with, then you could look at the other ones later, or you could go right to the third one and fall back to the second one if the third one didn't pass.
But I guess my question is, if we, if two of us are firmly, or if, if a group of us are firmly in support of the second one, and a group of us are firmly in support of the third one, wouldn't it make sense to just vote on whichever one gets moved?
Yes.
And then come back? Because I feel like trying to make all the amendments, I mean, if we went with, if we voted on version two, and then we wanted to add in the amendments from version three, wouldn't it have just been easier to vote on the version three?
You can do it, just, somebody needs to make a motion to put something on the table, then you can work from there. You can work forward or backwards, doesn't make a whole lot of difference.
Counselor Lyson.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the third version of the amendments. Ordinance amendments.
Second motion. So I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Ray. Are we, are we able to do that, or do we have to-
Yes. Now you should, obviously, there should be discussion.
Yes. Counselor Mark.
Point of inquiry. The original motion that was made, which was tabled, is that item automatically on the table by virtue of being on the agenda?
It's, it's, since that was tabled, that is the motion, that is what is on the table right now. It was introduced, the initial item that was introduced is what is before the council.
So I guess that was my question. So how did we just move the third version?
What you need to do is, the motion is to amend by substitution. So you are amending, taking the version you're looking at, item three, and amending the initial version by substitution. That avoids the necessity of breaking- That avoids the necessity of breaking it up into 14 different amendments to cover all the changes.
Kathy, that's what I said. Didn't know. But I'll, I'll accept that, that is the motion that I made.
Ed?
Yes.
Okay. Go further.
That's the motion that's on the floor currently.
The resident, the residence amendment, the third one?
The motion to amend by substitution.
Yes.
No, with the consents, with the-
Residence.
Residence amendment, is that the title?
Residence amendment. Okay, I'd like to talk to that. The way it's presented tonight is quite clear, however, I'm not sure if the progression of events happened exactly the way it suggests, because when, by the time we've come back to the third or fourth meeting, even the consensus amendments seem to have taken on a different element whereby adding the additional clause under positions eight and nine and, I think, 10 as well, it makes it even more difficult to find people who reside in Lewiston that fill those additional requirements. And I think that's the whole impetus to heading right into the third version for residence amendment, which I adamantly oppose and will oppose in any form as an amendment or if it's attached to the final product. I was even having a concern with the second item, but I would probably, in the flavor of compromise, would have supported that.
Further discussion on the council? To the public? Sure.
We talked, I remember you talking before that the public health person did not have to reside in Lewiston because of the expertise on our committee. And I remember even Counselor Markott said that was okay with him. So I just want to bring that up, that the public health committee, we have people that are on that committee that work in Lewiston but live outside, but because of the expertise in housing and public health could be on that, even though the person that's going to be on it does reside in Lewiston, the one we have asked and going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Shannon Cox, 119 Ash Street. A lot of good work went into the many recommendations from, from this ad hoc committee, and so as the council takes into consideration the variety of options available to you today, I would encourage thinking about expertise and residency of, of both of value, and so perhaps thinking about language that ensures a majority are residents while still makes room for expertise. And the other part would be ensuring some consistency from the ad hoc committee through the first term of the standing committee. So as a resident, I'd encourage that. Thank you.
Further comments from the public on this item? So I, I just want to address, address some of the things that Ms. Cox just mentioned and say that the majority is our residents, including the property owners and the tenants who are appointed to the committee. This really comes into play when we start talking about the three positions that are expertise-related. And then, what was the second?
Rental registration?
Oh, and the, the rental registration committee, we actually haven't addressed yet. I think we want to get through the amendment, decide which of the versions we're going to go with, and then talk about future amendments, including the one that Counselor Petten Gill introduced. So with that, are we ready to call the roll?
So just for clarification, you would be voting to, on the amendments as proposed in the residence amendment, which is the third version in your book. Okay, just want to make sure everyone's all set.
Counselor Mark.
I'd just like to point out that this is a standing committee, not an ad hoc committee, and as most standing committees are represented by people who reside in Lewiston, that's why I take that stand. And with respect to position number seven from the public health committee, that person did not have to be a resident of the city in any of the three versions.
Counselor from word two?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Petten.
Just, I don't know if it's worth noting in the residence amendment at the end of section four, it still includes the, including steps to address lead poisoning, the strike out doesn't happen on that version. On section two dash two-two-six.
Number four. Nope, you're on the wrong one. Number four, the lead language is not up here.
That's, excuse me, that should have been struck and out, because otherwise it is repetitious. So if, if the two who made the motion would accept that change?
I would.
I would. Okay. I think we're ready.
Okay. So again, we'll be voting on the residence amendment, and if you just want to, we'll be incorporating the adjustment that Counselor Petten Gill just pointed out regarding striking the language reference to lead poisoning in section four on page one of that. So Counselor from word two?
No.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four to two.
So now we come back to the amendments.
You can consider any other amendment that you might want to advance.
So Counselor Petten Gill, do you want to introduce yours?
Ah, the only, I'd rather, can we discuss it before making the amendment, or would it be better to, because the, I would like to make an amendment to set standing joint meeting dates between this housing committee and the city council.
The best place to do that might be in section two dash two-twenty-nine under procedures, just add a number four. Committee shall meet at least biannual, biannually, twice a year?
I was thinking at a minimum, twice a year, but have a, have a standing date, that way it doesn't get lost in the, the shuffle of, of business, you know, June and September possibly, or, I don't know if anybody has a different take on it.
I think I would say, like, maybe May and Sep-, well, yeah.
Hey, I was waiting about the budget.
June and September felt close together.
Process.
So maybe we start the budget process in March? So maybe-
I was thinking, and we're all tired from that.
So maybe before we start the budget process?
January and June?
January and June, is that what you said?
January and June, January and July.
Does that work with July, though?
That would be one of the first actions of the council.
Yeah, well, normally, July and August, we don't have, we only have one meeting, so you could do it in January, you could do it in January and June, you could do it-
February and, February and July.
December and, December and June.
The other, the other possibility I thought of was February, June, and October. I don't know if that's too many dates. Where would be?
Would work, too.
Yeah.
February and October.
I, I did, February, June, and October.
So three instead of two.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't know if it, the timing works out. I think January's too early, and December might be too late, depending on the, the election cycle.
I'm open to whatever others.
Yeah, I think, I think it's twice a year is plenty. I'd, I'd go for February and October.
I'd be all right with that. Fine.
And do we want to say, like, the first meeting in February or October, or are you, oh, good with just the, making sure it's on schedule for the budget?
Yeah.
Because, you know, it might be at a workshop.
So at least twice a year, including the first meeting in February and October?
Sure. That works.
I don't think they wanted to limit it to first meeting to allow for workshop flexibility.
Yeah, you could, you could do it at, just in the month of February and in the month of October.
And are you thinking that would be a workshop?
Um, no, because I, I think it would benefit the council to have public involvement as well, especially considering it's housing.
But a, like, a workshop on a council meeting night?
Right.
Okay. So it would just have to, we just have to make sure that it's a, on a meeting?
So if you want to just make the amendment to add an item four to section two dash two-twenty-nine, committee shall meet at least twice a year with the city council in the months of February and October.
At a regularly scheduled council meeting.
Right.
Regular scheduled council meeting or a regularly scheduled work, council meeting or workshop?
Yes. Council meeting with workshop, right?
Yeah.
Because it's not an actual-
Does it, does it give the public the ability to, to address the council at the workshop?
The mayor can make that exception.
Mayor can do that.
Okay.
So should we introduce other amendments now?
Do them one at a time, otherwise you'd get confused.
Okay, so do we, we vote on, we vote on this amendment?
Well, we have a motion, but we don't, we, do we have a second?
Uh, we do not have a second, no. This was from Counselor Petten Gill.
Second.
So I have a motion by, I have a motion by Counselor Petten Gill, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Further discussion on the council, on this amendment? Public discussion on this amendment? Back to the council, call the roll?
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
And the, maybe the last amendment on this agenda item is, and I think, again, Ms. Cox spoke to it, is having some transition time for the ad hoc rental registration subcommittee to have input into the housing committee. And I think that what has been proposed is to possibly have someone who served on the rental registration subcommittee serve for that first year while the housing committee gets established, so that there is, again, that transition from what was discussed on the ad hoc rental registration committee with the housing committee, because a lot of what they're going to be talking about is probably in relation to the rental registration subcommittee, but also in relation to lead poisoning prevention and lead hazards. So I would like to make the amendment, can I, am I able, okay, I would like to make the amendment that we add one more position on an ad hoc basis for that initial year that the committee is established, to have a member of the rental registration subcommittee also serve on the housing committee.
So the easiest way to do that would be to add a number 12 under the membership list. At just length, we would say, "A member of the prior ad hoc rental registration committee appointed for a one-year term."
Sounds good.
So I've made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ray. Discussion on that amendment. Counselor Mark.
Is that with a sunset?
Yes, it's after one year. Further discussion on the council? Counselor Petten Gill?
More on the line of Counselor Markott's question. Given the, the description by the city administrator, it doesn't appear to have a sunset, so maybe just clarify.
Can we clarify that language?
Yes, we could, to just make that clear, we could say, "A member of the prior ad hoc rental registration committee appointed for a one-year term without reappointment."
Great.
The position not being reappointed, not the person.
Pardon me?
The position will not, that-
Not the person.
That member is not.
No, that, that-
That's a temporary.
That seat goes away at the end of the year. Further discussion on the council? Any?
Second.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, so, thank you. And discussion on this item for the public? Back to the council, call the roll?
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Before you go-
So now we have-
Let me explain, let me explain now, because you have another choice. The original motion that was made and that was tabled was that the proposed amendment to the city code of ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 225, 229, Housing Committee received first passage by a roll call vote, and that the public hearing on said ordinance be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. You can certainly approve that motion, and this item would come back for a second reading and final passage at the next meeting. You could also do final passage tonight, since the, since we have already met the requirement that the item be introduced at a prior meeting. That fulfills the first reading requirement, so you could do final passage tonight if you wanted to, which would require that initial motion to be amended. In some ways, it's almost easier to just do it first passage and then have it come back through regular process, but you don't have to if you don't want to.
I say, let's do it tonight in final passage.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to change the, the motion to reflect final passage at tonight's meeting.
Point of inquiry. Wouldn't we have to vote on the motion first and then suspend the rules to do this?
I don't believe so, because the, the requirement of the charter is that any ordinance be introduced at one meeting, and then it can be passed at a second meeting. So all of the time, so we actually do first passage, that's something that has become a practice around here that's not legally required by charter. So I think you could go right to the second step if you wanted to. It's a past practice of doing first, second passage, so if you wanted to stick with that process, I don't, I think that might be simpler in some ways. And then we come back in two weeks and you could finally adopt it. Wouldn't mean that you couldn't at least get started by trying to consider getting information out, asking for people to apply and stuff like that.
So I have a motion by Counselor Lysen. Do I have a second?
Sorry, what was the motion again?
The motion is to do final passage.
To have final passage, to do final passage this evening, which is basically to do final passage for the ordinance amendment and incorporating all those amendments that you approved tonight into one new ordinance. I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Counselor Lysen, seconded by Counselor Ray. Discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Counselor Petten Gill?
While I'm not generally supportive of the ordinance that's in front of us, I, I do hope that it is successful in its, in its agenda, so I'm going to vote to pass it and hope for the best.
Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to one.
Are we done with agenda item number four?
Are we done, or do you want to have them just stop the whole thing one more time to be safe?
I'm lucky to do it one more time. That's fine.
What do you think? Just to be safe, why don't you adopt, do, do a motion to finally adopt the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Lysen. Discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll?
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to one.
Agenda item number five.
Item number five, public hearing and final passages to conditionally, I'm sorry, to contractually rezon the property at Two Cedar Street, the Continental Mill, from the Riverfront District to the Mill District. Requested action to approve final passage of the amendment to the zoning and land use code and map to contractually rezon the property at Two Cedar Street, the Continental Mill, from the Riverfront District to the Mill District.
So I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Mike Markott, seconded by Counselor Lysen. Can we get an overview of this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll give you a quick summary of where we're at and why we're here tonight. As you know, the Continental Mills, which is located at Two Cedar Street, was purchased back in June by the Chinburg Property Group. And we have Matt Asia here tonight, if you have any questions for him. So in the process of moving forward with, after their purchase, Chin, Chinburg Properties has requested a contract zoning that was introduced to you and first reading back on the 13th of August, and then it went forward to the planning board where they- planning board, where they heard that on August 26th. In your packet, you had the action by the planning board and then the staff report and application materials in your packet. The purpose of the contract rezoning was to go from Riverfront zoning to Mill District. This property has gone through a number of zonings back and forth, but the ultimate purpose tonight here is to go from Riverfront zoning to Mill District. And there are three basic things that are being looked at or requested with this contract rezoning. One is that the Mill District, if it were to be approved, would allow the density that would help the Chinburg Property develop to meet the maximum potential that this building has to offer. This is, as you are probably aware, a huge building. It's over 640,000 square feet, and so it's got lots of opportunities for residential development. So, the Mill District would allow them to go exceed what the Riverfront zoning density would allow. So, that was one point. The height for the Mill District has a maximum height of 100 feet. This building is at 108 feet, the existing height, and Chinburg Property has requested that the maximum height be extended to 125 feet, just to allow any future possible expansions of any kind. So, that's another part. And then, in general, the uses that the Mill District would provide for this development by the Chinburg Property would, in general, would allow for multifamily development, light industrial-type uses, and then a variety of commercial uses. Those uses were included in your packet in a use chart. And so, the, the ultimate goal for the development would be a combination of residential development and commercial-type uses. So, you could have an optimum type of live-work situation with this property. The planning board voted favorably seven to nothing, recommending a approval, favorable recommendation to pass on to you. And I did have some mapping. If you were wanting to look at any mapping, I think we all know this iconic building next to the river as you get ready to cross over into New Auburn on the Lone Peace Bridge. But I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And again, Matt Asia is here to answer any questions you might have from the Chinburg Properties.
Counselor Lyson?
Yes, thank you. Doug, this originally was in the Mill District, right, and was changed to the Riverfront, and now we're going back to...
Well, I didn't want to belabor my presentation, but...
It's okay.
To go back even further, up to 1999, it was urban enterprise zoning. I believe in 2000, it was zoned to Riverfront. It was quickly realized that the Riverfront zoning would make a lot of the light industrial uses in the Continental Mill non-conforming, so there was another contract rezoning in 2001 to the Mill District. So, it was in the Mill District. However, over the last two or three years, the building has gone vacant, and one of the provisions of the contract zoning to Mill District would have the zoning revert back to Riverfront should those light industrial uses cease to exist, which is what happened. So technically, it has reverted back to Riverfront, bouncing around, and now it wants to, again, the application is requesting to go to the Mill District.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Counselor Markot?
I would just like to say that this is a good example of planning for our future. I see private dollars going in this direction, and when, you know, we cater to that particular industry, we can only improve our ability to provide services and create a better tax base, maybe even lower taxes for the people who already live here, instead of seeing increases every single year to cater to enterprises that do not contribute to our economy.
Further discussion on the council? Call for roll?
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Agenda item number six.
Item number six, "Public hearing and first passage to contractually rezon the property at 183 Merrill Road Rear for Medium Density Residential District Bulk and Space Requirements for Frontage and Building Height. Requested action: To approve first passage of the amendment to the zoning and land use code and map to contractually rezon the property at 183 Merrill Road Rear for Medium Density Residential District Bulk and Space Requirements for Frontage and Building Height, subject to a contractual agreement, and to continue the public hearing for final passage to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting."
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Lejoy. Can we get an overview of this item, please? Thank you.
I'm back again. So, yes, we are here. I am here to present kind of an overview, summary of the CMP's contract zoning request. The ordinance, the description, kind of laid out the two basic things that CMP is requesting with this contract rezoning. Again, to summarize, the current zoning at this property is medium-density residential. This is a property that's approximately 20 acres in size, that's been acquired by Central Main Power. It's located at the very northern part of the city. Actually, part of the property, I believe, is at the boundary of the Greentown Line. This property, the 20 acres, is adjacent to the current Central Main Power Transmission Line corridor. And there is a requirement from the PUC to have this project, which I'll describe in a moment, that it would require this project to be located on a separately-owned property from the transmission corridor. Therefore, even though the transmission corridor has the appropriate lot frontage on Merrill Road, that this property actually has no lot frontage, because it's a separate parcel out away from any road frontage. The project that is being requested is for a, excuse me, a high-voltage direct-current converter that would be an integral part of the project to move hydroelectric power from Quebec down to Massachusetts. And this is along, again, the existing Central Main corridor that's, goes through Lewiston. So, there are two, again, requests in this contract rezoning. They're not looking to change the zoning. The zoning would remain medium-density residential, but there are two parts of the bulk and space zoning ordinance that are being requested. One would be a request to have, instead of a minimum frontage of 100 feet in the medium-density residential zone, it would be, go down to zero feet for having no frontage requirement for this particular situation. And then, as we understand it, the project is proposed, the converter is expected to be around 70 feet in height, and the current height requirement, maximum height for the medium-density residential zone is 35 feet. So that the other request is to increase the maximum height for this particular property to 80 feet, make sure that there's enough room to go beyond 70 feet if anything else is increased a little bit. That's the basics of this. There also is going to be access provided to the site. In your packet, there is a sketch, I believe that's Exhibit A, that shows where a access road is proposed that would go from a property that's located at 1651 Main Street, and that would extend over through property that Central Main Power has or is expected to purchase, and extend over across the Transmission Line property, and then reach the proposed site, the 20-acre site where the converter station is proposed. And then I also wanted to make sure it's clear that this is a contract rezoning, that no development activity could occur with this action if you choose to move forward, that the applicant, CMP, will still need to go to the planning board with a conditional use and development review application for any development activity that is being requested as part of this project. And then finally, the planning board voted favorably, with favorable, favorable recommendation to you with a six-to-one vote at their August 28th meeting. I'd be glad to answer any questions. And I know we have Matt Manahan here, and then, I'm sorry, I don't have the name of the other gentleman here, but he was, both of these gentlemen were at the planning board meeting, and they certainly are here to answer any questions that you might have, as well as I in here.
So I have one question. On the road frontage? There actually is no road frontage, right? Because, I mean, there is no frontage because it's not accessed from...
There is no road frontage along a public street?
Right.
Which is where that requirement includes. You have to have frontage along a public street. Like I mentioned, this 20-acre parcel is directly adjacent to the CMP corridor, which extends from the Greentown Line all the way to Merrill Road. There's enough frontage on Merrill Road, but this is a separate property that is not part of that corridor, so...
Counselor Markot?
The access road divides three properties at 16, 15, or 51 Main Street. Who owns those three parcels?
I may have to ask the folks from CMP to answer that. I know there's been some property acquisitions out there, and I, the, excuse me, the... It's listed as being owned on our tax maps by Gregory and Linda Laterno.
Good evening, Mayor Cludier and members of the council. May I address the council and answer this question?
Sure.
My name is Matt Manahan. I'm representing Central Main Power, and with me is Thorne Dickinson from Central Main Power. And Counselor Markot, to address your question in particular, the, the property that says Laterno on your, on that exhibit, Exhibit A, in your packet, that is now owned by CMP. That was purchased on July 31. And the property that shows NF Central Main Power, obviously, that is owned by CMP. The Hodgkin Lot, well, you know what? I think I, I'm trying to think if I got that reversed now. I'm sorry, the, the, the Laterno Lot, there is a... I'm trying to remember where there's an easement. You don't remember, huh? I might have to ask the project manager, Jerry Morabelli, to come up and address this definitively. We did close on a property, and I think it was the Laterno Lot. I apologize. I'm not certain of that right now. But we will own the, the land over which the road passes, the driveway. It's not actually a road. It's going to be an access driveway. Could I just ask, while I go back and check with Mr. Morabelli to verify this, could I just ask if Mr. Dickinson could just summarize briefly the benefits of the project?
Sure.
Yeah, there was a question, a few questions that came up during the planning board meeting, and I just thought at a very high level, obviously, I can address any specific questions that you have related to the benefits of the project, but at a high level, there are significant environmental, consumer, economic, and technology benefits associated with the project, and those benefits were confirmed and concluded by the Public Utility Commission after a careful 18-month review that resulted in a granting of the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, which demonstrated that there are these significant benefits that are there. And for anybody that does have questions, we do have a short summary here that, that shows those benefits as concluded by the Public Utility Commission associated with the project.
And I just, I just want to say, I just confirmed that, that property, those properties were purchased in fee on July 31. I was momentarily doubted myself whether it was an easement or a fee, but in fact, CMP will own those properties. It does own those properties.
All three of those?
Yes.
So basically, it's not simply a jigsaw, because that's the corridor I see in the middle, correct?
The corridor passes between, so the parcel...
Between the two.
Between the three parcels along Main Street and then the...
And the new one.
The converter property, right. Yep, the corridor is between them.
And why would the PUC require you to have a separate piece of property for this particular converter?
It, it has to do with the, the PUC's desire to ensure that the project will be independently economically viable apart from CMP, which is a publicly regulated utility. And so what they want to make sure is that the ratepayers of the state of Maine have no financial involvement, if you will, in this NECC project. So, they, the PUC basically included as a condition to the CPCN that the, that the NECC parcels are owned separately from the CMP corridor.
So, once the electricity leaves the converter station, does the electricity travel on dedicated lines to Massachusetts?
No, it's a, it's a common misconception associated with the project. The DC line is a direct line from Quebec into Lewiston, but at that point, it's deposited into the New England grid. And Maine benefits through lower energy costs, the displacement of oil and natural gas plants, and reduction of carbon emissions. So, it, there is no investment to get the power out of Maine and into, into, to Massachusetts. It's all benefiting the, the overall New England grid.
So, once it leaves Lewiston, it can benefit any of the counties on the way south, or even if it's retransported north, right?
That's right. And the, and the, the Public Utility Commission concluded that that lower energy costs is somewhere between $14 and $44 million every year. And the carbon emissions associated with displacing the natural gas and oil is about 3 to 3.6 million metric tons, which is equivalent to about 700,000 cars off the road every year.
I've been studying the benefits, and I like them all, particularly the fact that we need to improve our national electrical grid. We've been seeing stories about that for 20 years. It's about time. And being able to participate that, in that, and actually accrue some financial benefit to the city treasury in the form of taxes is superb.
Further discussion on the council? To the public? So I'm guessing there are some folks in the audience who want to speak to this item. I just want to remind you that we have a three-minute per-person public comment period. And there's a timer on this screen over here, so you can just keep track of how much time you have. And I would ask that you just state your name and address for the public record. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Tim Lejoy, 732 College Street. You know, this is a contentious discussion around the state, so I don't want to speak for the people not in Lewiston. I do want to mention that I have encountered considerable resistance to the project. There's a lack of faith in CMP. At least one planning board member disputes some of the financial benefits. I think it's one of these projects that we have to be cautious. There's a lot of stakeholders at, at the table here. I've even heard public officials affirm the validity of some of the objections. CMP had billing issues, mistreat customers, the environmental impact, et cetera. These are all things that, that need to be heard, and these people need to be given voice. Personally, if you were to leave it with me, I would say if it's such a great project, it should have no trouble at all passing a referendum. That's the way I would want to go. I think it's premature to, to pass this at this point, because there's a lot of people in the state that want to have a seat at the tables. A lot of people in Lewiston want to have part of this discussion. I look at some of the objections, and I know that they haven't been heard. At least there's the appearance in the public that they haven't been heard. And there is a lack of faith in CMP being able to handle a project of this size. Now, when we talk about affirming some of the objections, I, I always see a but, but the $8 million. And, and that's fine, but personally, my objections don't come with a price tag. I, I don't ignore certain concerns. I don't think other people should ignore certain concerns, because there's $8 million over here if you just ignore them, or, or put trust in an entity that you don't have trust in. My suggestion is that you not pass it, that you let this conversation play out in the state, and that you give ear to local people in, say, the form of a referendum, or they, they don't get the sense they've had a seat at the table here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? City Administrator Barry.
If everybody else is, if no one else wishes to speak, I just want to be on the list.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? You don't? You are welcome to... If you could just state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Okay. Teresa York, and I come from Farmington, Maine, which is about an hour and a half from the Forks area, from, from when the, where the new line is going to be cut. I, my message is simple, and it's this. So far, 22 towns have rescinded their support or oppose the NECC so far. And, and we have a referendum in the works, and I think the Maine people And I think the Maine people feel strongly that they would like to vote on this. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment, period?
My name is Josephine Stevens. I live at 15 Blue Rock Road in Monmouth. And I would like to say that this project that is part of your vote tonight, we're sacrificing one region of Maine to benefit another. The, the communities feel a little insulted by the offer of money. This is not about money for most of the communities, this is coming through. This is about a way of life. And there's a lot of benefits that are offered to communities, and it's coming from a utility authority, a multinational utility authority that has not only poor track record in Maine for not acknowledging and rectifying the billing problems that the people have now. It's concerning to think, is it, is it going to continue? Iberdrola has this track record also in Spain, similar statements, why they are price gouging. They've been brought to court for fraudulent spiking of costs because of the cold, and it's a concern that a lot of citizens don't trust CMP right now. And, and why would we trust what they're saying about the promises that they're going to bring to one small region of Maine? And it's really not going to benefit the communities that it's, that are sacrificing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I'm Rachel Swanson, and I live on Petten Gill Street in Lewiston. I will admit, I haven't been able to keep up with everything, but I do agree with the comments that have been said about trusting CMP, especially in light of what's happened. But my question is, has alternative energy sources been considered? You can put turbines in the ocean now. You can put wind farms in the ocean now. You can bring hydropower back. All of these are non-pollutant. They don't need fossil fuels. They do produce energy. You want to go forward and improve the grid? I agree. But why are you using resources that create more pollutants when there's other alternatives out there? Couple of years ago, I went to France with mills all over the place. We need to gear up our technology for what is current. Solar, I don't know why, solar at one time was a big up and coming thing. They even had them on the White House, and they take them off. Our technology today, those resources are there. I think we are going in the wrong direction. Massachusetts has all kinds of ocean around them. This technology's been out for years. Why aren't we looking into those resources and instead of destroying our public land, our public forests that it will never be regained for our technology that's becoming obsolete? This is why, the biggest reason is destroying resources to benefit another state that has their own resources. And the distrust is, let me see if I can get this right. There was a mistake on the billing, so CMP feels, correct me if I'm wrong, that the consumers should pay for the investigation, and then they want to raise our prices to cover for the overcharging of the bills.
So I have to ask you to wrap it up, I'm sorry?
Pardon me?
I just need to ask you to wrap it up, because your time is, I'm sorry.
Well, basically, my point here is there are other resources. I don't know if they've been looked into.
Thank you. Others for public comment?
Hi, good evening, my name is Susan Theburg, I live in Jay. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I just wanted to briefly state that I feel that what we have north of us in the woods is rare, precious. It is something that most of the rest of the country doesn't have and enjoy. It's been noted for its, as significant for its resiliency to climate change, to help mitigate climate change. And I think the, one of the more important things is the United States EPA in April sent a letter to the CMP or EVAN Grid with concerns. Actually, they sent it to the Army Corps of Engineers, I'm sorry, I'll correct myself. To the Army Corps of Engineers with concerns over environmental impacts. That they suggested that there should be some alternative studies done. This is the United States Environmental Protection Agency. And I think that this is rare and precious. This is something that people travel days, hours. They, they travel from all over the world to come and see our North Woods, to be in a place where there is no infrastructure. And when you go up there and you can be on a mountaintop and not see anything, it makes you feel like you're part of something that's bigger than yourself. It makes you realize what a, you know, how you're part of everything and not just, it, it takes you out of your own space and puts you into the, into just a better place. I think it's healing, I think it's important, and I think that if it weren't for Segment One, which is the 53 miles that goes from the Boundary Mountains down into the Forks, I might, I might not be against this, but I am 100% against this project because of that area, that sensitive, beautiful area that is just, it's ours and we need to protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Joshua Nagin. I live at 108 Spring Street in Lewiston. And I just wanted to clarify, because there were a couple of statements that were made. The, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the power is actually coming from a hydro plant, and currently it's not on the grid, so that's wasted power if it's not transported for use. So I don't necessarily have an opinion yea or nay, but I'm just saying it is green energy. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
My name is Sonia Roy, and I live on 11 Sway Lane in Lewiston. I guess I really just don't understand, the people of Maine do not want this project. I don't understand why they can't vote on that. Why can't we have a say? People of Maine don't want it, they deserve a say. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? City Administrator Barrett?
Yes, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and talk a little bit about my perspective on this project and its benefits to the city. Number one, we're here to talk about rezoning, to allow installation in Lewiston. We're not necessarily talking about some of the other issues that have been brought up. But that installation in Lewiston is a $250 million investment, which is important, I think, to the future financial stability of the city. If you look at our historic situation, in 2016, looking at data for Lewiston and other communities, our per capita assessed value was about $61,000 per person. The average of the 10 largest communities in the state is $108,000 per resident. That's 80% more than us. So we have a very low assessed value on the one hand. We also have a community that has some unique challenges. We're one of the communities in the state that's seen a significant influx of new Mainers. Those folks who come here often takes a while for them to get acclimated to our community, to learn the language, and to become economically self-sufficient. But that's an issue we have to deal with. Our poverty rate is 22.2%. That's 77% higher than that of Maine. Our per capita income is about 75% of Maine's. So we are an economically challenged community. We have a low assessed value, which means we have a relatively high tax rate that puts a burden on our residents. This project is going to produce somewhere around $8 million a year in additional tax revenue. That includes both the investment in the converter station and also the other improvements that will go, be going into the various lines that feed in and out of Lewiston. That money is important to us, because it will help us meet some of the service demands that we have, and hopefully find ways to relieve some of the burden on our taxpayers. I would point out that this converter station is sitting on the boundary between Lewiston and Green. If they moved it one lot over, that investment would be in Green, which already has a significantly lower tax rate. So I consider there to be some elements of social equity involved in this project, in that the company has decided to place this installation in a community where it knows it's going to pay higher taxes, and which benefits a community that at times struggles to meet its service demands and to retain its ability for its homeowners to pay their taxes. Also point out that this project is not going to have any cost to the utility taxpayers of Maine. That's being, as was noted, segregated from CMP's other operations. The additional energy that's brought in will increase the supply of energy, which will have a positive effect on energy rates. Our electric bill last year was $1.3 million. So certainly, anything that helps on our electric costs would also be appreciated. There'll also be a lot of jobs created during construction. Many of those will be in the Lewiston area, given the extent of the construction that's going to go on here. So there will be some spinoff benefits economically to our community and to our residents. So I think for all of those kinds of reasons, this is a good project for the city. I would also point out that, that there are a lot of other proceedings going on here. They're going to look at many of these other issues that have been raised. We have the Land Use Planning Commission, which is, I think, scheduled for hearings later this month on the project. We have the Department of Environmental Protection, which likewise has to grant its approval. We have the Corps of Engineers, which will have a say in the project. We also have the State Department, which has some comments, some ability to control the project in that it interconnects into Canada. I will point out that as an intervener in this project, we have seen all of the information that's been presented at those various bodies, and I have been impressed with the efforts that CMP has gone through. Certainly, every project has impacts, there's no question about that. You want to put a, a windmill on top of a mountain, I guarantee you, there will be people who will oppose that, because it interrupts their view shed. There are people, seems like, can oppose almost anything these days, and you see that here often in front of the city council. But they've done, I think, a lot of work to try to minimize those impacts. The forest that they're going through is not a pristine first-growth forest. It's an industrial forest that is frequently clear-cut. Much of the areas that the line goes through right now are areas that have been clear-cut or will be clear-cut in the future. They've tried to avoid publicly protected conservation lands. They've agreed to put their line under the Kennebec River. So I think they've make, made a good faith effort to try to address some of those problems, but I will point out that those are issues that will be resolved by other levels of government, not necessarily here. But this project will provide income to the community that we desperately need, both to meet service demands and to hold down our tax rate. I will also point out that it does not bring along with it kids that go to school. Does not bring along with it roads that have to be plowed and maintained and repaired and replaced. It does not bring along with it weekly garbage collection requirements, where we have to pick up the garbage and deal with it. So we're, this is one of those projects, from our point of view, that is revenue positive with almost no expenditures associated with it. So I think it's very important for our future, and I would urge your approval of this rezoning.
Thank you for that synopsis. Can I ask one question related to an item that was raised by the public that you didn't touch on? And that is the referendum process. And I just want to clarify that our vote on this contractual rezoning tonight does not preclude a referendum process in any way. Correct?
That's correct. To be, the referendum process that's being discussed is a statewide referendum process that's being, was pursued through the legislature, did not get adopted at legis, at the legislative level, and now I believe there is a referendum petition signature drive underway.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
And further clarification on this vote is to accept this property from frontage and building height maximums or minimums that have been previously set within code, correct?
Correct.
It's just addressing that, it's not actually rezoning.
Correct.
The only clarification that I would make to that is it's not totally, wouldn't be totally accepting the project from building height, it would make the maximum building height 80 feet.
Instead of the 35.
Instead of 35.
Thank you. Further discussion on the council?
Councilor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, amendments to the policy manual for miscellaneous fees regarding penalties for ordinance violations regarding prohibited tobacco use in designated hospital areas. Requested action to approve the proposed amendments to the city policy, Policy Manual Number 81, City Department Miscellaneous Fees and Penalties as recommended by the city administrator.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Can we get an overview on this item and then come? Can we get an overview on this, this item?
Sure. So the city council approved at the request of the St. Mary's Hospital and the recommendation from the Public Health Committee of December of 2017, I think it was, an ordinance amendment to prohibit smoking within a particular section of Campus Avenue. Probably intended at that time was to also do a second agenda item, which would then set the fees connected to any violation of that. That was an oversight, it just, I guess, was forgot, forgot to be brought forward to the council. The police department recently cited someone for smoking in this area and needed our department to create the information regarding the penalty, so they could bring it to court. And there is no language specific in the policy manual for this violation. So the code language says, "Any other violations are subject up to a $1,054 fine." But it's up to, we didn't feel that provided enough clarity for the police department, the person who was charged, as well as the judge. It was sort of an arbitrary decision that they would make. So we took a look at the other similar violations for the miscellaneous policies regarding nuisance parties and that sort of a thing. And the structure is 100, 200, 300 for First Defense, Second Defense, Third Defense. So this is just a recommendation. So ultimately, it's just a housekeeping recommendation to actually have an established set of penalties for this violation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Petten Gill?
Just curious, we've already discussed smoking in public areas. I don't know if this would be beneficial to add this into that for the policy?
Is that in there someplace else? We'll check and see. I suspect it may already be covered, and if it's not, we'll come back with something with that.
Right.
Just so we're not doing this again.
Right. For multiple amendments.
Further discussion on the council? Councilor Markot?
So this particular audience is just the campus, street area?
Doesn't include the other hospital at all. And there was a need to identify that area because?
The hospital approached us and requested it.
Because they are a no-smoking campus and where you're crossing the street to go to Duville Pavilion and Maison Marcotte, and then the hospital across the street, they just wanted that whole zone to be no-smoking.
Okay. So clearly separate from anything that you might expect at CMMC.
Well, CMMC has at times discussed this. They may come forward at some point with a similar request, which I think would largely be for High Street, for example.
Okay.
Further discussion on the council? To the public? Oh, sorry, Counselor Ray.
Sorry. So does this need to be set with a retroactive date, given that someone has already incurred the citation?
No, the one that...
Or with a $1,054?
This is going to be going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Because they've already processed the one.
Okay.
This is just sort of for the future.
Great.
Thank you.
To the public? Popular lady at the podium?
Yeah, I know, Ronnie Parity. It's another public health issue. I asked you to vote for this. Again, the hospital did come to us a couple, was I think two years ago, wasn't it? Yeah, so let's get campus, you know, because there's still people sneaking out and having cigarettes and stuff like that. And I think it needs to be posted on that area and all that stuff. So please, this is a public issue. And when we talk about e-cigarettes too, so that smoking and people are now doing e-cigarettes. So we need to watch this vaping because that is a public, big public health issue that the Public Health Committee is going to be working on this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item? Back to the council. Call the roll.
Counselor from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 0.
Agenda item number 8.
Item number 8, resolve supporting the efforts of community recovery to place safe syringe-disposal drop boxes at various locations in Lewiston. Requested action to approve the resolve supporting the efforts of community recovery to place safe syringe-disposal drop boxes at various locations in Lewiston.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Counselor LaJoy, seconded by Counselor Ray. Discussion on the council? To the public?
Tim LaJoy, 732 College Street. I see the opiate epidemic up close and in person. 16 years at the jail as a shift commander, I see addicts come in, I watch their bodies as they go into withdrawal, as they fight off the poison or want to fight to get the next fix or whatever. So I understand the challenges that this brings to a community, but from the core of my being, I don't think this is a solution. When you have people that are willing to inject a poison as deadly as that into their own skin, to think that they are somehow going to be responsible with disposing of the accouterments of drug addiction, I think is misguided. I looked at some of the locations that are posted in the packet around parks, near areas where children walk frequently. And I wonder what kind of message we send to them as they walk through a community and they see a place where, oh, an addict can put a needle. Does it somehow legitimize the activity to them or desensitize them to it? That is my objection. We hear the term managing decline. I take a tougher approach to addicts than most people do because of my environment. And sometimes you need to talk strong and direct and remind them of the behavior and the potential outcome. I hear of somebody I know dying every week, every single week, and it's painful, and it's a tough, tough thing to confront. But the word I want to use is we have to be tough about it. And I think this is a bad first step. I think this says as a community, it's okay to shoot up in Lewiston. We'll even give you a place to put your needles, knowing I'm under no illusions that any of them are even going to use them. And the cleanup is still going to fall on the professionals, like it does now. And I almost prefer status quo to something like this because this is giving a pass to the behavior. That's my true feeling. We look into a community, I'm not going to frequent a business with a needle box hanging outside or take my grandkids to a park where needle boxes are hung. I'm not going to go to those areas. And what does it say to people that want to come into the community? Are they going to buy a home on a street with a needle box, frequent a business with a needle box outside, take their kids to a park where these things are? My approach is a little bit tougher than that. We need to be stronger in our efforts to drive drugs out of the city, and then we won't need these. Thank you.
Ronnie Parity, 82 Prospect Avenue. I've been in public health for at least 15 years. I'm a nurse of 50 years almost. I've seen all that he has seen, but I disagree with his thinking. I'm worried about the policemen, the firemen, the children that might pick up a syringe in the park, or even an animal, a beloved pet and everything. And you know, when you get a syringe, needle prick, you have to have HIV testing, hepatitis B testing, and everything else that you have to be worked up when you get a needle stick. This is how dangerous a needle stick is. If these can save at least one person from getting a needle stick, or a kid picking up fentanyl, for instance, fentanyl, you just put it in your fingers and absorb through your blood. This is, this is not an answer to the whole thing, Mr. LaJoy, but it's a step to make it safe for our first responders, for our children, and our people in the city of Lewiston and our visitors. Please, we need this as a public health, and our Public Health Committee has passed, has done this, and this is brought out by Tri-County Mental Health. Yes, we need to be tough, but we need to do something to protect the people from needless needle sticks and other drugs at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, counselors, Madam Mayor. Josh Renegian, 108 Spring Street in Lewiston, Maine. I want to say that generally, I'm fairly supportive of the project. I think that it's something that our community could actually use. But I wanted to just point out a couple of things that are concerns for me and also question the baseline of the location of the needle boxes. So first and foremost, if they're placed in childhood parks, which are basically community parks for kids and young adults, it would seem to me that that would be in direct violation of the laws that we have in place where those are supposed to be drug-free safe zones. So it's a concern as far as the monitoring of the boxes and how often they're cleaned and who has access to them. Our parks are not monitored. We don't have people in our parks 24 hours a day watching these things. So if they're going to sit with needles for a week, just like in a lot of cases their trash does in certain parks, it's questionable to me, simply because they can be tampered with. Another thing would be, just like Marcott, Pettingill, Sunnyside Park, these are for children and young adults. There's no other reason to be in those parks, so providing these Sharps boxes, and again, just seems counterintuitive. And also, on the Lewiston Riverside Trail, I've been cleaning that trail for the past two years, about four times a week. And I'm not the only person that's doing it. Same thing with Sunnyside Park. I can tell you that I have never encountered a syringe in the past two years. I'm not saying that people haven't, but I can give you names of 20 people who haven't. So it's a question of where they're, the most used, the most watched, as far as being able to be tampered with, and also the considerations of the neighbors that live in those neighborhoods. I mean, our park, the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association actually raised the funds to put the child, the playground in there. And it's for kids and for the community and for people from neighboring communities to use for kids. So it's just a question of thinking through where the boxes are and how secure they are. Is basically my points. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
Good evening. My name is John Connor. I reside at 408 Pleasant Street. I attended the workshop on August 13th, when the Sharps disposal initiative was first introduced. I listened to Kerry Goslin with Tri-County Mental Health. I listened to Chief O'Malley, as well as Mr. Doughty and the council. My goal tonight is to persuade you to vote no for this particular initiative in its current iteration for a more safe and more logical solution. I have four points that I'd like to mention. Point number one is who are the drop boxes intended for? I fail to believe that a user of illegal drugs will have the capacity or the inclination to properly dispose of a used needle after injecting a powerful drug. So to me, that leaves the non-user to find the needles, to pick up the needles, and to dispose of the needles. This doesn't sound to me like a solution to the problem that this initiative is purported to target. It sounds to me like it's just the good citizen having to pick up after the drug user again. Point number two is do first responders, do they receive proper training for dealing with Sharps in the field? Do they wear protection, like gloves, when they are anticipating handle of Sharps when they go out in the field? I ask this because if our first responders are trained and won't respond to these without wearing protection, how can the council expect citizens to handle these without proper protection or without proper training? Because they will eventually be the ones picking these up. Point number three, why not secure install, or securely install SNAP or Sharp containers in every police cruiser, fire truck, and public works vehicle for proper disposal by trained professionals? Why not rotate daily monitoring of these 15 proposed locations between the police, fire, and public works departments? It could serve dual purpose. It could show the community that they care and that they're involved, and it would also allow our public safety personnel to survey the area and deter any possible future criminal activity in those areas. Point number four, are procedures currently in place for citizens to notify public officials, public safety professionals, should they come across a needle? There's a see something, say something initiative currently in our federal government. Why not follow that model and get the message out to the citizens of Lewiston that should they come across the needle, contact the city. If they see a needle, contact the city for proper disposal, rather than the city having the citizen put themselves in harm's way to pick up the needle. Public safety, used needles are definitely a public safety issue, and I don't think that it should fall on the law-abiding citizen. It should fall on the city. Finally, I don't have, I don't live near any one of these drop box locations, so I can't really speak to the fear of coming across any of these dangers on a daily basis. I can only imagine how angry I would be if I did live in these areas and then I was expected to handle these and dispose of them for the city. At the end of the day, a used needle in a public place is without question a public safety issue. Please don't be fooled by the notion that this initiative in any way combats Lewiston's drug problem. It crudely combats the byproduct of the drug problem. The city placing drop boxes around the community does not curb needle use. It's merely telling the good citizens, you pick up that filthy needle, that's not yours, so we don't have to. But hey, here's a drop box for you. Thank you.
Any further public comment? So I would like to ask Chief O'Malley and Dale Doughty, the director of our Public Works Department, to sort of address, I guess, some of the things that have been mentioned in public comment. So first of all, I don't know which one, maybe you both want to step up to the mic?
Certainly can.
Placement, first of all, I think, has been mentioned, and my understanding of where the boxes are going to be placed is based upon where we've seen the most needles dislocated.
Where we see, I agree with Mr. LaJoy that I wish we didn't have to do this. The reason why we're using these places is because that's where the police are getting called to go for the needles.
Right.
I wish we didn't have this byproduct of the drug use here in the city, but the reason why those locations were selected was because that's where the calls have.
And I also, I want to follow up on one thing you just said, because that's where you're getting the calls from. So there already is a mechanism.
Yes. I like the fact that we've got somebody that's cleaning up on the trail there, but we've gotten calls out there. We have some homeless camps that are out there that we're working on with the city that that's what those hope, that's going to address that perhaps the folks that are using the drugs will put them in the needle boxes. We're not going to put it right in the middle of the basketball court down on Sunnyside Park or on the little swing set there, but that's where we're getting calls for the needles. We have some people will take a picture of a needle and post it to our Facebook page or on another Facebook page. So we determined when we met with Tri-County was, we gave them locations that we were responding to for needles where kids are walking down the street and getting on the bus, there's needles on the ground when they're playing in the playgrounds. I wish this wasn't happening, but that's what is happening. That's why we suggested those locations.
And then in terms of other disposal boxes, we have one in the police department, and we do have them in cruisers.
Yes, we have the boxes.
That is also already happening.
I know the Public Works is addressing that issue as well, but it's a constant, and I don't remember anybody saying that we expect folks in the community to pick them up. I wouldn't want them to. If, I mean, we get calls, we go. We do, we put gloves on, we go, we take care of it, and we dispose of them. It's, I also probably agree that majority of the people who drop needles on the ground probably aren't going to put them in there. But if we, and I'll go to what Ronnie Parity said, if we get 10% of the people who are doing this decide, okay, put in the box instead, to me, that's going to be a benefit to us. The program is designed that when they get picked up, the box is going to be mailed in, they're going to weigh them, we're going to get an idea of how much they're using. It's costing the city anything, other than some time of the public works employees to pick up these boxes. And after a year time, if we come back and say we've only had one needle put in there, is it worth it to have all those boxes around the city? No. But I think we give this an opportunity and see how it works. And I think Mr. Doughty can talk too. He was in touch with Portland. Portland's had these boxes in their playgrounds, I think about four or five years they've had these.
Can we also talk about the tamper-resistant?
I think Dale can address that better than I can.
The cleaning out, which I think is also a Dale question, and then the training piece.
So I'll start on the back and move forward to training. We train all of our public works staff that we believe will come in contact with a needle for blood-borne pathogens, as you mentioned earlier. We provide them with tongs, we provide them with gloves, although the gloves are not going to stop a needle prick there, they're really for the, what's on the surface of the needle. We are providing them, we're providing them with different types of needle boxes in the future to put inside their vehicles that can actually fit in maybe a PVC housing on the back of the truck, because they are encountering more and more. And I think that's probably, probably, you know, kind of the underlying undercurrent is they're, they are incurring more in some of the locations that we may need to adjust that the chief, you know, what we, where the locations we put into the packet or that the chief put in were the places he was responding. I think we need to modify them slightly because there's some locations that Public Works tends to be more often and is picking them up. So I think as we get going and as we see how they work, we can modify their locations. We're beginning to see needles in things like flower beds, in mulch beds, which is certainly a risk to the community or a risk to children or animals, but it's also a risk to public works activities, whether in the mulch beds, doing the planting and, you know, and re-fluffing up the soil, because people are hiding them wherever they can hide them. And flower beds appear to be one of those locations. Did I miss one or two of the questions?
How tamper-resistant are the boxes?
The boxes are in a steel encasement, the ones in Portland, and I think she said last week they were going to use a similar one that are tamper-proof or tamper-resistant. I don't think anything's tamper-proof. Dennis and I were riding around recently, and we've seen a number of boxes that people shouldn't be in, they're lockable, that people are trying to break into. But I think it's something that, as we get going, both the chief's staff and my staff will monitor. If one does get damaged, we'll just remove the contents and be done with it until it can be repaired. But they are tamper-proof containers, and then the receptacle goes inside of the container. So we remove the receptacle as a whole, similar to the shops, containers you see around, that's sealed and then mailed away, as the chief said.
And then how often will they be cleaned out?
I think back to the chief's point, we'll begin to monitor them at the beginning. As we take them out, we'll weigh them, and then we'll schedule those replacements based on kind of our history, as our history grows, as to how much, how many people are using them. If it's one or two a year, that one probably is not going to go very often, but one that's receiving many, we'll certainly remove them before they get full or overflow or have any of those issues. Part of it's going to be based on the history.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions from the council? Councilor Ray?
I just wanted to thank Director Doughty and Chief O'Malley for their work with Tri-County on this initiative. I think any step that moves us forward towards more safe disposal of syringes is a great one for this community. Keeping our citizens safe and our workers safe is really a top priority. So thank you both for spending time and resources on this. I know that it's coming through grant funding the first time around, but I'm hopeful it's a successful pilot and we can continue to work and iterate on it. So thank you both.
I just want to add one more thing.
Go ahead, sure.
There was a comment that was made about not visiting restaurants that have sharps disposal containers, and I want to point out that there are several restaurants in Lewiston that have sharps disposal, disposal containers for diabetics, and everyone I know continues to go to those restaurants. So I think that that might have been a bit of an overstatement. Councilor Lee?
Yeah, I think there were a few overstatements, in my opinion, but one of the things, I don't have a big audience here, but I, there were some good points. I think the war on drugs has been an abject failure. I think, you know, we're not going to wrest our way out of this. We need to lead with love. I also don't think that this is, you know, a big solution to the problem. You're right, we're not ending it by putting these in, but I do think we're giving the opportunity to make it a safer place for our community and also even for some of the users. And, you know, one of the things I've learned when working with the, the community who suffers from substance use disorders, is that tomorrow is when I'm going to get off drugs. And often, if they don't make it till tomorrow, and you know, we had over 400 deaths in 2018, they're never going to get off. And, I mean, I'm, I'm for leading with love and compassion and understanding and trying to get these people into treatment. And remember, treatment isn't a one-time situation either. People relapse, so we've got to expect some of that. So, I mean, it's a community response that we need to take, and I think this is a very, very small step. Again, I, I think that people should report, we should, we should maybe do a better educational effort on this as well, to say that, don't, don't touch it, call somebody about it. And again, we don't expect the public to be cleaning it up. I certainly don't want them to do that. But again, we also have epidemics across the state, including AIDS and HIV, which is trending the wrong way, and a big part of that is the use of dirty needles. So somehow, we've got to take the needle thing back, and I'm, you know, I'm in favor of even more harm reduction with respect to needles and needle exchanges where possible. I think the, the issue of enabling, and some of the other remarks, that we're just promoting this activity, is just not true. We need to keep people alive so that they can get the kind of treatment they need. And a lot of people in this community are volunteering to do that type of work. So I hope it, I hope this leads to some, some better solutions. And again, I think we can monitor to see how it's working, and I agree with Councilor Ray, we're improving the safety of this community, and that's of utmost importance and our responsibility. Thank you.
Councilor Markcott?
I'm hearing a lot of good points from the other side of the aisle. What, when I, just to address something that was just said, diabetics, because I happen to be a diabetic. I don't think diabetics are going to be irresponsible after they prick themselves. Most of them have their own containers not to put the sharps in immediately after use. But like what was said earlier tonight, regarding the responsibility of somebody who has just shot up, I'm not going to expect that. I'm thinking that putting up these boxes, and I'm envisioning them being red, so that they're attractive, and that reminds me of an attractive nuisance. Now, yes, some child who wouldn't have even thought about picking up a needle and putting it in a box before, because there was no box, now might try it. That's an attractive nuisance. It encourages untrained people to handle the sharps. One child pricks himself and has a damaging repercussion from that, I wouldn't feel right about supporting this particular item here tonight. It was also said that a lot of the areas that were selected for these boxes were in drug-free zones where you'd find children. That I also find unacceptable. I, I think a better program would be to have our public safety individuals, fire, police, others, out there monitoring the areas that are of most concern, rather than trying to do this stopgap measure and hope that other people will pick up after the infractors. And that's where the real danger comes into play here. If we build it, they will come. It is sort of enabling. I mean, I'd have even thought of that in a word until it was said here tonight, but it does suggest that we're going to put these up for you, so you can go out there and do this and have a method to throw it away afterwards. And we know that that'll be a very small percentage. So I'll be voting no on this tonight.
So I just want to clarify that I wasn't debating the responsibility of diabetics. I was simply pointing out that many restaurants in our local area already have disposal boxes. Councilor Pettingill?
So there have been a bunch of good points made tonight. At the last meeting, I had asked for more information based on the fact that we're basing this off what Portland's doing. The more information we were provided says data from Portland that shows decrease in number, and then as it's a handwritten note, I can't really decipher the rest of it. So I'm disappointed that we're being asked to move this along without more information. I'm leaning more towards that while I support the idea and the notion behind this, I do have to wonder if there is a better way to do this, whether or not that be start with fewer locations, because it does have potential benefit. But I don't know if asking us to take on these 15 locations, that many of them do happen to be places where children go to play. Councilor Markcott actually brought up a fantastic point about the attractive nuisance, and while I know what he's saying, I do think that there's a valid point to what our, our children are going to do with these, because they, they learn through mimicking behaviors and learning by watching. So if they see adults picking this up, there will be times that they're unsupervised, that because they've witnessed that behavior, and that behavior is supported by the community, they may take these unnecessary risks onto themselves. And then with, you know, without this data, I can't support it. It does inherently...
Do I have a motion to suspend the rule?
Motion to suspend.
I have, I have a motion by Councilor Markcott, seconded by Councilor Ray. All those in favor?
Motion passes to suspend the rule. So the motion before you now is to appoint to the Lewiston Auburn Watershed, I'm sorry, to the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission Board of Directors. Requested action to appoint Public Works Director Dale Doughty to the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission Board of Directors for a three-year term, retroactive to January 7th, 2019, and said term to expire January 4th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll.
Council from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Pettingill. All those in favor? Almost forgot.